Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman. Martin.
Here.
Wallace. Stelling.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Haniford.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and get started. Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A: Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 21st, 2020. Item B: Approval of the minutes of the special meeting held January 12th, 2021. Item C: Approval of claims in the amount of $132,420.12 and payroll expenses of $198,574.10. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
All right. Item six: Reports from staff. Sanitation committee meeting on December 30th, 2020. I'll write down, is that you, Randy? Or is that... Yeah. Randy, you got a report for us, please?
Yeah. We had to discuss the normal thing where we have people send in for like bad ones, expenses for gardens and agriculture, and stuff like that. And then, we've been short, Skidsteer that's been breaking down and having issues and stuff. We discussed purchasing one, and we, I believe we talked about go ahead and do it, and I'm looking this later. Then we talked about the ordinance for the trash service to look at it and update and kind of tweak it where we think it needs to fit our, what we need. That'd be it.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Stelling? Next item is Alba Public Library Board meeting on January 4th, 2021. Mr. Eckhart.
I was unable to attend the library board meeting.
Everybody can see the minutes are in the packet. Are there any questions regarding the library report? Thank you. The next item is Parks and Building Committee meeting on January 5th, 2021. Mrs. Brady, can you give us a report?
Yes, so we met, the Parks and Building Committee met. We met with Chair Paul Barton from the pool task force. There you are, Paul. And Paul's going to visit with us a little bit about the items that we discussed there regarding the swimming pool and the pool engineering toward that we are working towards. The only other item that we discussed, or we actually discussed two items, LED light conversion, which Oklahoma LED is here to give a presentation on that to us here shortly. And then we discussed a new air conditioning and heating unit for the professional building. The lobby unit is not working and is needing to be replaced, and so we moved forward with ordering that piece of equipment and hopefully have that installed within the next couple of weeks. Paul, alternative to you, we'd like to visit. Do you need a couple?
Yes. So, thank you. So we received a report from Lance Riderson and Carruthers on the condition of our pool. And basically, we had to conduct an assessment to determine, you know, what is, what is, what are the challenges that the pool has. And, you know, on one thing that was a surprise, the plumbing that actually goes to the pool, and this plumbing was replaced, seems like it was in the 80s or 90s at some point in time, and that plumbing is still in very good condition. It's performing the way that it should. But just about everything else with the pool is in a challenged condition. You know, the patches that were probably done about the same time in the 90s now need patches. So there's a lot of deterioration at the pool's walls. There's exposed rebar. This deterioration is concrete that's 80 years old. And that, and what the bottom line evaluation of the shell is, is that if we just repair the shell, then it will be a brief period of time, being 10 or 15 years, that we'll be right back in the situation again where we have to repair the shell again because there will be continued deterioration at that point. Now, one thing that I wanted to mention about the plumbing, the pool, when it's in operation, was losing 22,000 gallons of water a day. And it was kind of was an assumption that a lot of this was going through the plumbing. But apparently, since the plumbing appears to be in passable shape, it's in workable shape, then the leakage is occurring through the cracks and seams in the pool. There is one of the vertical walls that is leaning into the pool, a good, I think it was an inch or so, that it's, so it's way out of square. That pushes the gutter level out of square as well. If you, there is a very detailed report in this, in here, on how those sketches and how things were tracked. But they did, brought a laser transit in and evaluated the levelness of the gutters of the pool. And we found that there is a, just slightly over a two and a quarter deviation in the guttering. So the guttering's out of level, which that prevents the pool from circulating the water properly, so the water in the pool doesn't get cleaned properly. So there's some recommendations, and there's some estimates on what it would cost to repair the pool against replace the pool. And there's a lot of work that we still have to do in that area. One of the things that we are doing is we are going to be contracting with another firm to evaluate the report and make sure that their assessment is accurate and that their estimates are somewhere in the ballpark. Because typically, engineering estimates are usually high. But basically, you know, we have real problems in the pump house. That structure is collapsing. It has created a life safety issue for people that would have to be in that room. So there's just a lot of things that are going to have to be dealt with. And our next step is to have this report evaluated by another independent firm and have their take on what this report is, and then we'll be releasing it with additional information to the public. So that's where we are. Are there any questions?
Does the council have any questions?
Paul, we also talked about the bathhouse.
Yes. But part, I mean, the bathhouse is, part of this evaluation is the bathhouse will be renovated to be ADA compliant. So that's part of it, you know, there's, there was a, just a, I'm going to say a generic pool that was quoted as part of the, what it would cost to replace, and that particular pool did have a splash area associated with it.
Does the council have any more questions? Well, I will say, Paul, thank you to you and the task force for your diligent efforts to help us, maybe not get all the answers that all of us want, but all the answers that we need in order to know what we need to do to properly move forward.
Sure.
It's been a great amount of work, and we do appreciate you and your committee members for the work that they've put in so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, one other thing I'd like to mention is that if you drive by the pool, when they did the evaluation and when they were evaluating the shell, they marked in spray paint areas of concern. And you can just look in the pool from outside the fence, and you're able to see what those areas look like.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding Parks and Building Committee meeting? Item D is Alba Board of Adjustments meeting on January 11th, 2021. Angelica, can you give that report as well?
Yes, and so the Board of Adjustments met on last Monday to discuss variance requests from Alba Public Schools. They are doing some renovation work in the art building, I think it was the old locker room, and then something before that. So they're doing some new renovations to that building. And in permitting that, Chief Miller had seen that there are some issues with fire hydrants that is, would be used to fight fire, if there was a fire to occur in that building. We did not have enough water pressure from the existing fire hydrant. And so, we were basically telling them that in order to meet the minimum requirements, we would need to install, or the school would need to install a new fire hydrant there. The school basically was saying that wasn't a part of their budget that they put together, and were asking a variance to put that fire hydrant in at a later time. And they're planning to do some work over the course of the next two years and would like to do it in the next scope of work that they do at the school. The Board of Adjustments Committee, they, Board of Adjustments group, they denied that request. They want to, basically, in the conversation there is they'd like to see that fire hydrant in place before there's any occupants in that building. And so, I know we're working with the school, they have sent in another variance request. We're working with the school to see what we can do to accommodate that and get, move forward with that project. So, are there any questions I can answer there?
Next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting on January 11th, 2021. We did have a few items of business. One was that we saw some estimates, saw an estimate on repairing our, I don't know what Pappy stands for, but our Pappy lights. I know what Odo stands for. Anyway, and so we instructed Manager Corson, Derek out there, to go ahead and, to get the work done on that. It's not expected to exceed $5,000, it's within the limits that he can make purchases as a manager out there. And we also had an executive session to discuss Derek's performance as the manager and determine whether or not we wanted to keep him on full time in that capacity. Derek's been doing a great job at the airport, and I want to sing his praises just a little bit. It's been quite some time since fuel sales at the airport exceeded $20,000, but the last two months since Derek had been there, monthly fuel sales haven't exceeded $20,000. Derek has been really great with customer service, and we have people landing at our airport right now that have never landed here before and are telling their buddies to check out Alba when they make their trips. And so, he, you know, he's implemented some price adjustments to help encourage that, but he's also, you know, from all accounts that we hear from pilots on the field, as well as the occasional pilots that make their way into town, Derek's really doing a great job out there and, you know, taking good care of the property and everything as well, working well with other departments within the city to make sure that, you know, we don't have to necessarily contract things done when something can be done when we have other, you know, personnel that are capable. And so with that, I mean, we did hope to keep Derek on as a full-time manager, and we're really pleased with the work he's doing. So, he's already talking about, you know, events and things that we can start to have once COVID restrictions are lifted, and I'm really excited at his enthusiasm and the initiative that he's taken to help our airport out, and look forward to what he's going to be able to do out there. There wasn't any other action items except for regular reports on the agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Item F is the Water Waste Water Committee meeting on January 15th, 2021. Mr. Stelling.
Yeah, we mentioned, we discussed the water line project south of Alba that's been kind of been on hold for a couple of years, and it's getting to the point that the pipe that we had bought started to deteriorate more as luck outside. We discussed hiring it installed, since it has been some time, since we're short basically on enough how to try to self-install ourselves, which we are hoping to try to do ourselves. And then we discussed where the replacement of the water line was most needed. We talked to Russell, and he was letting us know we're, they're having more issues. So, it's kind of what we've got.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Stelling? Thank you, Randy. We do have an agenda item in the AUA meeting regarding that water line, so stay tuned. The Finance Committee meeting on January 12th and January 19th, 2021. Dr. Haniford.
Yeah, so for the January 12th meeting, we started by talking about preparation for our upcoming budget retreat for our next fiscal budget. You will see several, like Herr Parker just talked about, several things that we discussed, whether it was some of the projects Council and Stelling just talked about, also some of the budget amendments from the donation to our library, to some carry money that we'll be voting on tonight. We did hear an update on our pool project, the upcoming audit, additional audit that was sought by from a community member. We did approve, and it will be up for vote again tonight, our standing with us for next fiscal year. We had some brief discussions about CDs and went into tonight's discussion. And then we also had a long talk about not only some projects that needed to be done, but also some positions in some of our critical areas that serve our community that we're going to have to start getting ready to fill or have some preparation in filling some positions. Tonight, we reviewed and signed our claims, some of our large claims tonight. Out of the general fund with bulk fuel, for a little over $10,000. Airport fund, again, with fuel for a little over $24,000. And then out of the AUA fund, we had debt services of over $61,000. We're running on track with our budget right now. Our revenue is down a little bit, but our expenses are down. Again, can't say enough about our city manager and our departments and the heads of our departments and what they've done with the budget. With that cash on hand, we have about 1.7, which again, we talked, it's now time that we need to look at some of the infrastructure that we need to go ahead and get done, and also some of the positions we just talked about. Our investments are right under a little, right under about 1.6 million. We did discuss three upcoming CDs that are coming due, and decided that we'll put those out for bid again. We did have a couple of larger ones that we're going to ask for a six-month and a one-year term to see if there's any major difference in the interest. Our sales tax for the last month, which would have been December, was a little over $316,000. This was about a percent down from the prior month of November, but we were about a percent up from the prior year in December. I know city manager will discuss some other things. I will say that we've done a good job with, we have been putting back 5% each month to make our payments for the airport. Again, with our budgeting and it's saving money, we're also going to look at doing an extra payment. We'll be putting the savings account, so we're looking at a much larger payment the first year. I think it's the finances, the finance committee's goal to have that airport paid off much sooner than later. And other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Haniford? Thank you, Beau. For the mayor's report, I'm not, I don't really have a whole lot more to report than what the council members and Mrs. Brady have reported for committee meetings. That's been, we've had a lot of committee meetings since the last time we met as a council, so it's, it has been busy. I do have one thing on the, that's not specifically marked on the agenda, but we have some recognition for someone special in the group, but I'm going to not steal Chief Warcutt's thunder and ask Chief Warcutt to come up and present to the council and the community.
So tonight, it's my honor to announce the retirement of a very close friend of mine, which is Frank the Hammer Lambert. Frank started in law enforcement at Northwestern in 1996. He was going to go full-time, but because of an injury couldn't attend CLEP, and so was moved part-time to security. Through some events and things that happened, he was unable to attend CLEP until Shane Vork became chief at Northwestern and sent him to Reserve Academy in 2004. That's when I got to meet Frank. I was working there as a student worker, also under Chief Vork, and I got to meet Frank at that time. This is when I fell in love with law enforcement. I remember being trained by Frank, which I don't know how many people can say that, but I can. I was, one evening Frank and I were walking around and walking outdoors and doing what we did at Northwestern, and just talking. And Frank said, "If you're working in law enforcement and you're not helping people and you're not having fun, you're not doing something right." I'll never forget that. Something I'll always remember. From there, in 2011, Frank called me and he said, "Ben, I'm not going to work at Northwestern anymore." After I got off that phone call from Frank, I called Chief Sanderson, which is sitting in the back, who's also retired, and I said, "Boss, we got to call, we got to, we got to hire Frank. I don't want him out of law enforcement, we want to hire Frank." Gary said, "Frank Lambert?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "Are you sure?" I said, "Yeah, I want to hire Frank." We agreed. I called Frank back and I said, "Frank, come to work for me." And Frank said, "Are you sure?" I said, "Yeah." And I think, well, Frank was, "Two days? Think you were off for two days, three days," and we hired Frank. So October 1st of 2011, Frank came to work for us at Alba Police Department. Frank's official retirement date was November the 2nd of 2020. We've been trying to get to city council for a while to give him the recognition that he deserves, but here we are today. Everybody that's here that's wearing a badge can tell you a story about Frank. So I'm going to tell you a few. One story that I'm going to tell you is, right after Frank started for us, he came to me, he said, "Boss, what do you want me to do?" And I went to Gary and I said, "Gary, what do we want Frank to do today? He's going to work a couple of days this week, what do we want him to do?" And so Gary and I decided, "Hey, let's, we've been having some problems with people parking illegally. Frank's used to writing parking tickets at Northwestern, let's have him go write some parking tickets." And so I said, "Frank, let's go, let's go write some parking tickets." That week, I got more complaints than I had, and I couldn't remember when. Frank comes to me after a couple of days, he says, "Ben, I need, I need another ticket book." I said, "Good, Gary Frank, how many parking tickets did you write?" "There's 50 of those things." So Frank wrote a lot of parking tickets that week. I can tell you tonight that there'll never be another law enforcement officer like Frank. When he called me and told me he wanted to retire, I tried to talk him out of it, but I completely understand why he's doing it. So, that's tradition. We're going to honor Frank by giving him the badge that he was given in 2011, also a certificate of retirement. So Frank, if you could come up here.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Frank, for all your years of service to this community and the university, and, you know, you're bringing up some good grandkids too, that we're proud of you for also, so thank you. Next item is the City Business Manager's report.
I will keep my report relatively short. I want to let everyone know we have several open positions throughout the city of Alba. We have code enforcement officer position that we're looking to fill, we have a position on our Parks Department, we have some openings for our EMS service, we have some openings on our police department, and we have some openings out here at the rec center for part-time help. So, a lot of job opportunities at the city of Alba. If you know someone who's looking for a job, we'd love to have an application. So, our applications are available on the website. Dr. Haniford talked a little bit about the financial statements, I wanted to give a little more in-depth update. Dr. Haniford talks about our staff members, our supervisors, they've done a great job. I think I say this every month, but I just couldn't be more pleased with how things are going. Right now, you know, we, at the end of December, we are about 51% of our budgeted revenue has been collected, and we've expended about 42% of our expenses for the year. So, that's the main reason we've been able to grow our cash balance this year. Our supervisors have done a great job. I know as we get into the summer months, we will likely begin to see some more expenses come in, you know, we'll have street projects and some other things like that, but I do know the staff has worked very diligently to create and do some good things with what we're doing. I can't tell them thank you enough. They'll talk about sales taxes, you know, sales taxes stayed pretty consistent with what we budgeted, and I'm glad to see that. Utility billing, we, this year for utility billing, we have collected about 63% of what we budgeted for the year. As we go into these winter months, I just think that we'll see utility billing going to slow down a little bit. Obviously, water's not being used as much right now as it will be in the summer months, and so I think that'll probably line back out. And then I just wanted to touch on our aging report. I've seen, we've seen a lot of growth in our four months past due accounts. We're, now that some regulations have been lifted, we're looking at working with our collection agency to turn some of those accounts, those past due accounts, over to collection so we can work on getting that money back into the city. I know it's never a fun discussion, but it is something that's necessary to keep things moving forward for the city of Alba. Dr. Haniford also talked about, you know, working to make sure that we're paying back our airport loan, loan a little more quickly. We discussed putting about $250,000 into our savings account, and said that, that's a great thing to be able to do. That's all that I really have to talk about. I know we are kind of running a little bit longer than normal. I would be happy to answer any questions. I held a lot of committee meetings, a lot of board meetings this month. Is there anything that you guys have questions on or hasn't been addressed?
The only question I do have, when you say the 61% of the utility billing, is that collections or bill?
That is what we have billed, so non-necessary collections. That's where, when you look at the aging report, on the aging report, you can see that our four months past due has grown, I think from 9% to almost a little over 14% this year. So, I think that's a good place to clarify.
Are there any other questions?
I don't. I ask this to you guys all the time. Our marijuana, everything else, have those sales taxes come up? Are we seeing anything?
I will tell you, Mayor, I need to look at that again. I haven't looked at it since the last time you asked me that. At that time, probably in two months, we hadn't seen an increase in that sales sector in that category. I will look again, and I can report back to city council and what you guys think. I apologize, I shouldn't have made that, just had to look it up another half a day. Thank you.
Counsel, have any other questions? Thank you, Angelica. Next item is presentation from NWOSU of the 2020 Fall Semester Alba Incentive Scholarship Program. Skeeter, would you like to get us kicked off, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council. I want to say thank you for your continued support. As I listen to the As I listen to the revenues coming to the city, and I start to think about, what if we had closed our school and sent everybody away, we didn't have 1,200 students spending at Walmart and local merchants, what a difference it makes. So, your investment in Northwestern and our students comes back in big ways that we don't even think about sometimes, so thank you all for continuing to do that. You also have a bill in front of you, it is $270,421.3. I'd be happy to address any questions anyone might have. And just an explanation, well I guess you probably know why your city attorney's not here, but Dr. Cunningham, she's still quarantined, so she's not here, and some of us are bouncing in and out of quarantine, so Caleb's gonna be here, Mr. Caleb Monzberg, he's gonna follow me, he's a Digan Student Affairs and Enrollment Manager, he's gonna talk about the upcoming student enrollment. Thank you.
Before you get started, I do wanna say I skipped an agenda item unintentionally, we will come back to that after Caleb gives us a presentation for school.
Well, Frank just left, but I was gonna be getting, I thought I'm gonna thank Frank for not giving me a ticket, but I was at Northwestern. But, to talk about Northwestern, on behalf of President Cunningham and other members' staff and faculty and our students at Northwestern, we wanna say thank you to the council, to our citizens of Alba for the support, the continuous support of the Alba Incentive Program and what it means to what we do on a daily basis. So, since the last time we were before the council, I know many things have changed, and likely for everybody, things have changed, but I'm happy to report that Northwestern was able to find a way to complete a very unusual spring, summer, and even a fall semester, and thankful that we were able to have students on campus for a fall semester, for the entirety of the fall semester. And so, we feel that that's a great accomplishment, not only for our students in completing classes, but for our staff and faculty that work really hard to help that along and educate like what we do, do so great at. So, another quick thing I wanna highlight, we were able to even host a commencement ceremony for our fall graduates, and even for the graduates that gave them an opportunity that graduated in spring, we were able to host one for them as well, and to me, that was a, that was a great big feather in our hat to celebrate our students and for the hard work that they put in, so a great, great accomplishment. When Northwestern was probably one of very few across the country that was able to do that, we found a way. So I think that was a great, great thing for our students, but, you know, we had some guidelines that we went through to be able to accomplish that, and everybody worked hard to make that happen. But, on the enrollment side, I will say enrollment has been tough, I know Dr. Hanifer and I, we worked through it on a daily basis, and it's been tough, and it's been tough for a lot of schools and a lot of places across the country, so we're not alone in that. But, I will say this, our Alba Incentive Program and what support we have from the city and from our citizens definitely keeps us competitive, and what we are doing out on the road is as we recruit students, provide opportunities, and, you know, we see lives change right here on our campus for a lot, a lot of people, and we're very thankful for that and very thankful for the support. So, with that, I'll go again and say thank you, and thank you for the support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Well, thank you guys, and share our appreciation with Dr. Cunningham and the rest of the faculty and staff, because Northwestern is one of the things that makes Alba Alba. This economic development tax that's in place for the scholarships is certainly paying out, you know, dividends for our community, and we look forward to approving that scholarship again in the Economic Development Authority meeting here later this evening, so thank you guys. Item seven, which I didn't mean to, but accidentally skipped, is remarks and inquiries by citizens. We will have a public comment, if anybody would like to say anything to address the council, speakers will have two minutes, and we ask that you please identify yourself prior to your two minutes. Does anybody have any comments for the council? Glad I came back to that. Next item is a presentation from Oklahoma LED. If I get this right, Chris Schrader and Joe Schrader are here to give us a presentation, as we're looking, as Angelica mentioned, we're looking at upgrades for some of our city buildings and our lighting.
I'm Joe Schrader, who's got the same last name, he's the apple on the tree. So, can you make sure we're not parking illegally? I'll be brief, I've got five tabs in here, but I first wanna start out by explaining who Oklahoma LED is. We're a family-owned company, I started it 10 years ago. We are electrical contractors, licensed Oklahoma electrical contractors. We travel around the state of Oklahoma, we have performed over 300 full LED lighting projects, conversion projects, and we're experts at what we do, and it's a very niche discipline in the electrical field. We go around sharing our findings and reports, and we claim that we can save tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and sometimes it's hard to wrap your mind around how accurate could these reports be. And I wanna just answer that with this, and I use this example in every presentation that I give, if 65-watt light bulb burns 65 watts, I can't manipulate that, that is a fact. And when I convert 65 watts to kilowatt-hours, which is how you pay your electric bill, I can tell you exactly how much this light bulb costs to operate per hour. But when I unscrew this light bulb and replace it with a 9-watt LED, I have just lowered the wattage by 86%. This light bulb is 86% cheaper to operate per hour. Does that make sense? So, the only difference between this light bulb and the city of Alba is you've got lots of these, different shapes, sizes, colors, so if the whole city of Alba's lighting consisted of one light bulb, I would be able to guarantee you that I will lower what you spend on lighting with your power company by 86%. Well, it's not. So, we go through a very detailed lighting audit with a very sophisticated software system, and we catalog every single light in every building, inside, outside, with the exception of your sports lights, and that is cataloging this, so I can put my finger on every kilowatt, watt, and dollar that we're presenting as savings and spending. Does that make sense? So, if you'll turn to tab two, I wanna show you how, if you'll go to that very first row, do you see that Alba Park gazebo? I wanna show you how we do this, and I'm only gonna pick on one line, I'm not gonna go through every line. MH70-1, that's a metal kaleid 70-watt fixture, -1 is one bulb. The fixture count, there's one of those in that gazebo burning 91 watts. We want to take that down to 40 watts. 3996 represents dusk to dawn, 365 days a year. So that one light is burning 364 kilowatt-hours annually, and we will drop that down to 160 kilowatt-hours annually with an LED. So, if you'll go to the very top, and I'm right here, what's this cost per kilowatt-hour? We received 12 months of your power bills and analyzed those, you are spending, you are being charged 9.17 cents per kilowatt-hour. The city of Alba has a total of 1,193 fixtures, we are lowering what you're spending with your power company by 68%. Does anybody have any questions about that page of how we come up with our, our numbers, our statistical analysis? And again, the point that we use to come up with your savings is a very basic 2 plus 2 equals 4, it's just arithmetic. So if you'll turn to tab three, this is a summary. Your annual savings after the retrofit will be right at about $20,000 annually. Your rebate amount from your power company is $26,100, that is paid directly to the city of Alba. You are spending north of $2,292 a month on lighting. How did we get that number? Because you do not get a lighting bill, you get an electric bill. Well, when we do our count of lights and add up the wattages and we convert it to kilowatt-hours, we went through a hours of operation survey of the buildings, when do the lights come on and when do the lights come off, how many days a year, and so we came up with a baseline of hours. And that is a very accurate number, because what we don't include are any buildings or areas that burn the midnight oil, special meetings like tonight, and so the burn hours that we have listed in here are actually, the actual burn hours are higher than what we're reporting, which makes this report and analysis incredibly accurate, if not understated. Does that make sense? So, when you are spending 2,292 north of that a month on lighting, and that will drop by 68%, so $682, saving city of Alba $1600 every single month, beginning the very first month. So if you'll turn to the second page, this is our proposal. The total project from start to finish, we do not subcontract our work, we are electricians, we bring our own electricians, this project would take us approximately one week to complete, from start to finish with zero punch lists. Minus your rebate of $26,100, the net investment is $86,635. Now, there is, we have a very unique government funding program, and this is why we've been able to convert over almost 230 Oklahoma school districts, complete districts to LED lighting in the last three years, especially in this budget crisis. I wanna direct your attention to the finance option. This is a lease purchase through a company called Government Capital, they only work with cities, municipalities, and government entities. So, you are spending north of $2,292 a month on lighting. That will drop to 68%, to $682-ish. If you finance through a lease purchase, that net amount of $86,635, you will pick up a monthly payment that you did not have last month. This is a brand-new $1380 a month payment, but the savings that you're getting after conversion self-funds this, so you're, there's no money down, there's no money up front, the savings funds the new payment, and you're actually $231 budget neutral positive. So this program, if approved, and I hope it's approved, I know it's a non-action item tonight, will generate 2,500-plus dollars annually in additional cash, and a complete retrofit is complete. Does anyone have any questions about those numbers? Then again, I can put my finger on every kilowatt, watt, and dollar. If you'll go to tab four, and I am going to be closing, tab four, page two. This graph shows, the red line is what you're spending annually currently. You're spending north of $27,500 on lighting annually. By engaging in our program and doing a lease purchase, your total expenditure of lighting energy and your new lease payment that you picked up, you're actually dropping your overhead or your spend by $3,000, or whatever that math comes out to. So, a no to this program as presented doesn't save the city of Alba $1, and you keep all of your old lights and old technology, but a yes to this proposal as proposed literally doesn't require no capital investment upfront, no money down, it is a self-funding project. And then tab five is our purchase order, but if you'll go to page three of tab five, please, you'll see the next five or six pages, it's the complete scope of work, what you have currently and what we're going to. Let me explain what we're doing, I can do this in two minutes, and then I'll be open for questions. Every cam light that you have, you know where you screw in a light bulb, those, no more light bulbs, we're putting in a trim kit, which is like a new build, so it is upgrading the look of all of your cam lights, so no more light bulbs. All of your troughers, like in the offices, you know, the two-foot, you know, rectangular, those are all coming out with brand-new technologies, LED flat panels. Now, the flat panels have, they're commercial grade with PMMA lensing, if you've ever been into a Brahms and you see those flat panels and they're yellow, that was somebody who was not a lighting expert, or they thought that they could do it cheaper, and they didn't know what they were buying. So, everything that we're proposing in this proposal is exact, is beautiful, the before and after is gonna be incredible, and it's gonna be the right lighting. This includes every light, inside, outside, every closet, every office, every hallway, throughout the entire district. Every exit sign will be replaced with an emergency exit, and every ballast in the entire city, in every building listed, will be removed. Ballast is a dirty word. So, that concludes my presentation, now, big questions?
Counsel, other questions? And Angelica, you may jump in here, we appreciate the work you put into this presentation. It is something that I think is gonna be important to our community moving forward, whether we move forward with your company or another company. Our attorney needs to look at the proposal a little bit more, and I think we, after this, we will assign it to go back to our Parks and Buildings Committee for another look as well, and then we look to have some form of action to take in the near future. We do appreciate you coming up to Alba, and we will be in touch.
I would just say, I guess that the council is busy with RIG, you know, this is something that is obviously over the $50,000 mark, if we were going to purchase outright, we'd have to bid out, there's the lease purchase agreement that we can do, we just didn't have that paper work to discuss with RIG, and so we're gonna work on that, and then we'll go back to Parks Building and have some discussions and bring it back to the government.
Did I hear that right, it was 10, 10 years?
10 years.
No, the lease purchase would be six years.
Oh, six?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was 10.
I didn't see, so I follow.
Tab three, page two, the finance option.
It was 72 months.
72 months. And the reason that-
Oh, that's just 10, okay. 10 years savings, what's the reason?
That's what I was saying.
And the reason that it's 72 months is because we present budget-neutral projects. If we took that to 60 months, then that number would be red. So, that's just a function of numbers and formulas, so if the city of Alba said, you know, we've got money in our building program, and we wanted to put $50,000 cash or $20,000 cash, which would be financing a smaller amount, and those are just numbers that we could play with. And if you have a relationship with your local bank, we don't care where you finance it through, Government Capital is a partner that we bring to the table, a lot of companies like ours in many other industries, when they bring a finance company, they get paid points, it's not wrong, it's not illegal, it's not, we do not. We bring the very best proposal to every project so that you're getting the very best price on the lights, install included, and financing it's the very best money that you can borrow.
One quick question, so like these lights here, are they completely replaced or just retrofitted?
This is what's called a strip, this would be retrofit. All of your cam lights will be new, all of your 2x4 fixtures will be new, all of your exterior fixtures will be new. We do not retrofit exterior fixtures. It is not a good idea to retrofit exterior fixtures because those exterior lights are hot boxes, and just because you can retrofit them, they will start going out, especially in the summertime, and so every exterior fixtures is brand-new.
About like our, I know like our president or her, she was interested because it would mean our, like our gym lights would be all switched over.
All brand-new, all brand-new.
I see some ears hurting out in the audience, but I'm gonna keep things moving along though, and if y'all have, you know, the ability to stick around a little bit, it looks like you might have some other questions.
Be better, be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11, discussion and action to approve resolution 2020, that's 003, amending the fiscal year 2020/2021 annual budgets for the city of Alba, Oklahoma. I skipped another one? Bo, you wanna take over? Okay, item 10, discussion and action to approve resolution 2021- Item 10, discussion and action to approve resolution 2021-002, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma. This resolution is for the CARES Act funding that was received. The expenses that were submitted in order to qualify for this funding were incurred by the police fire EMS department expenses, and there is only a positive financial impact from accepting that funding. So unless Angelica has anything to add, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-002, amending the FY 21 annual budget for the City of Alba.
Have a motion by Dr. Haniford and second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve resolution 2021-002, amending the fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 11, 2020, resolution 2021-003, amending the 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba. This is more funding related to coronavirus. This is from Oklahoma Organization for EMS's, and it is $25,901 to offset some COVID expenses for our EMS department, particularly with regard to mitigating the spread. So this is going to include things like protective equipment and things of that nature. Again, this does not have anything but a positive financial impact, so I would, unless Angelica has anything to add, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution 2021-003, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Dr. Haniford to approve resolution 2021-003, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item 12, discussion and action to approve resolution 2021-004, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma. This is a $100,000 donation from the Bud and Maxine Nichols Estate, or the Warren and Maxine Nichols Revocable Trust. This is intended for use at the library. Once again, this is a positive impact on our books, and Angelica, unless you have anything to add, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2021-0, there were four, amending the FY 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve resolution 2021-004, amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget for the City of Alba. I will add, having been able to know Bud and Maxine, truly, truly wonderful people, visionary in a way, they had donated to over $600,000 back to our community from their estate for various different aspects of the community, and we are very grateful for what they've meant to our community over, over the years and what they'll, what legacy they've left for our community for years and years to come. So if there's nothing else, I would, I would ask you to call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 12, a discussion and action on calendar year 2021, purchasing designations and limits. Angelica?
So these are outlined in the online packet. So this is really a housekeeping item for the, the calendar year 2021. Per organs, we have to set spending limits for our supervisors, for, it's for myself, for our supervisors, directors and assistant supervisors and directors. So we made no changes other than we no longer have a finance director, so we took finance director off, with the public works director Ronnie back there, and we basically gave him the same spending limit the finance director had in previous years. Everything else has stayed the same. That seems to be working for us. I think on there you'll see the Air Corps Commission, they designate spending limits for the airport manager. That has not changed. Basically just making sure that we're, we're taking care of all the items on our checklist for this month's annual resolution. Are there any questions on that?
Given being no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve calendar year 2021, purchasing designations and limits.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Haniford and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve calendar year 2021, purchasing designations and limits. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
There are no items for new business that I'm aware of. Item 15 is a margin named for you by council member. All right. There being no more business, our city council meeting is adjourned, and we will open the regular meeting of the Alba Utility Authority. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman? Wallace? Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21, 2020. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $133,814.37, and payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to approve the purchase of John Deere, of a John Deere 316 GR skid steer from Western Equipment LLC in an amount not to exceed $36,000. Sanitation Department has been working with the council committee for a while now, talking about the need for this piece of equipment, and it is something where I, I, they have, you know, researched other options out there, and this is what they've come up with is the best solution for their needs at this time. Angelica, Ronnie, do you have anything to, to add?
As far as purchasing something used, we're actually coming out better this way because something with hours on it and a few years old was actually more than the price that we got. I mean, after the deal that they made us being a municipality and being a branded machine, so it seemed like the best way to go. The machine that we have out there right now is just, it's really used up for the demand of the work that it does out there. So this was, instead of spending a lot of money and just going deeper in the hole in this minute, it seemed better to just go ahead and do this now.
Yeah, it's been in the shop a lot.
Yes.
It's had enough. Council have any questions? Angelica, do you have anything to add?
No, I have things that I want to talk about, so.
Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the John Deere 316 GR skid steer from Western Equipment LLC in an amount not to exceed $36,000.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the purchase of the John Deere 316 GR skid steer from Western Equipment in an amount not to exceed $36,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item six is discussion and action to authorize the bidding of installation of 6,500 feet, of 16-inch water transmission, transmission line from the well field. This has been talked about in the most recent water and wastewater meeting. Randy mentioned it during his report. This is essentially to authorize the city manager to work with the engineering firm to put together the bid documents so that we can go out for labor on this project. As Randy mentioned, we haven't been able to self-perform this since the material was purchased over two years ago, and so in order to ensure the integrity of the materials that we purchased, it's important that we go ahead and get this completed. Probably we are looking at changing the location in what was previously engineered, but it is believed at this time, and Angelica, you're going to get clarification if you haven't already, but it's believed that by moving this project to this new location, it's going to better meet the needs of the, the city, and it will have cost savings associated with it that offset the amount of engineering fees that we anticipate. Randy or Angelica or Ronnie, do you have anything to add?
I would just say we're basically taking this project from Holland Highway 281, and we're moving the project on County Route 430 south of Highway 281. There's about three miles of line, 12-inch line that runs from the highway down to our well field, to where our storage tank is at the well field, and Russell believes that this line is in need of repair just the same as this line that we had already, already engineered out. The difference being where we had originally engineered the project, the water table is extremely high there. That was the original struggle with us self-performing the work when we were fully staffed, and, and so by moving the location, we don't have the high water table, we don't have to haul in rock, I believe. It is, it is believed we won't have to haul in any, any rock. The sand there will accommodate what, what needs to be done. And so it should be cheaper for us to bid the project out than it would be where we originally had the engineering done. So we would essentially save the engineering plans that we have because that line will need to be replaced, and it is still going to be a need that we have. We'll just utilize those engineering plan, engineer plans at a later time, so.
And our remaining loan money will still be used on it?
Yes, we will. We, we budgeted this year, I think, $391,000 of loan revenue to be, to be utilized, and so the project as it was originally engineered, what we were anticipating about $320,000 in labor costs, but we believe that will likely be less, but we will have to pay for new engineering plans because of the new location. Does that make sense to everyone?
This would be the last project that was identified when we went out for the 2018 revenue bonds, and so whatever remainder after that, we would have available for other water wastewater projects.
Which the one that we've already approved, or that we've already, as the council agreed, is the rebrand that we applied for and received money for, so that would be the next project that we would move forward with, with the remaining funds.
Is there any other discussion or questions regarding this item? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the bidding and installation of 6,500 feet of 16-inch water transmission line from the well field.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Winters to authorize the bidding of installation of 6,500 feet of 16-inch water transition, transmission line from the well field. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
I just want to tell that sanitation department, I probably have one or two comments a week from citizens praising what a great job they're doing. I know personally what a great job they've done, and I truly give comments about what a great job it's going on out there. We appreciate it.
I, I think we all do. Yeah, you're doing a good job. So is approved. Thank you. All right, the utility authority meeting is adjourned, and we will open the regular Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Sherman?
Hamilton? Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21, 2020. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $14,671.15, and payroll expenses of $7,326.44. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Dr. Haniford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item five, discussion and action to approve the payment of NWSU Foundation's invoice for the 2020 Fall Semester Scholarships in an amount not to exceed $270,421.3. This was the presentation we had earlier. Is there any need to discuss this further?
The only thing I would say is this is more than 50% of the budgeted expense that we had for this year, so when they submit the spring scholarship, if it is more than the budgeted amount, we'll do a budget amendment at that time. So I just wanted to make note that we were keeping an eye on that.
Is there any other further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I made a motion to approve payment of NWSU Foundation's invoice for the 2020 Fall Semester Scholarships in an amount not to exceed $270,421.3.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Dr. Haniford to approve the payment of the NWSU Foundation's invoice for the 2020 Fall Semester Scholarships in an amount not to exceed $270,421.3. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you guys again for coming.